I'd like to call this meeting to order. City of Palm Coast City Council Meeting. It is Tuesday, August 15, 2017. It is 9:00 AM. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Applause). (Inaudible) United States of America. And to your calling for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call please.
Mayor Holland.
Here.
Vice Mayor Nobile.
Here.
Councilmember Cuff.
Here.
Councilmember Clufus.
Present.
Councilmember Shipley.
Here.
Mayor, all members are present.
Great. I will now entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the City Council's August 1, 2017 City Council Business, August 3, 2017 City Council Special Workshop, and August 8, 2017 City Council Workshop.
Move approval?
Second.
Moved in second. And all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, it passes unanimously. Agenda item number two, a presentation of a check from St. John's River Water Management District, cost share funding for L1 and K1 WEAR for flood mitigation. Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Mayor. See you later.
Morning. Yeah, let me introduce this if I may. You know, the Water Management District has been a great partner for us, you know. Even back in the days when they were supposed to be the big bad guy, we always got along very well, I felt like, and they've been very supportive. Last year was the first year that they funded a WEAR project. You all went to the ribbon cutting. And they've recognized the value of our WEARS from a standpoint of flood control, but also regenerating the aquifer and holding back that fresh water before it goes into the saltwater system. And that helps with our water supply and wetlands, et cetera, throughout the whole region. So this year, they decided they liked that project so well that we applied for two grants or two WEARs. A grant for two WEARS would probably be a better way of looking at it. And they have approved that. So today is a little presentation that Jim would like to make on behalf of the Water Management District and to applaud that cooperation we have. So Jim, if you'll take it from here.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Madam Mayor, Commissioners, my name is Jim Troiano, and I'm an intergovernmental coordinator for the St. John's River Water Management District. And I want to just talk to you very briefly about cost share, as the manager mentioned. Cost share is very important to us because it does help us with our overall mission in improving our water quality and the conservation of that necessary water for our future in Florida. This year, our governing board awarded $21.3 million to 43 recipients in our 18 counties. That's a lot of good work and effort going back from our taxpayers, back to doing good work in our communities. For Flagler County itself, nearly $1 million, $266,000 for the City of Bonnell, and then $700,000 for the City of Palm Coast. I must congratulate you, Mayor, and staff. Your staff did a great job on the application process. They were walking through with our staff at every step of the way. And overall, our staff was very pleased with how yours worked and the work product that came forward. So on behalf of our staff, to yours, congratulations and the job well done. At this time, I'd like to present a check to you, Madam Mayor, and to the City of Palm Coast, in the amount of $700,000 for, as the mayor, as his manager stated, two flood control structures in the S-section of Palm Coast. This is well-earned, and the City of Palm Coast certainly will be able to use this money to improve our overall water for not only just the city, but the area itself. Congratulations on a job well done. On behalf of the governing board of the St. John's River Water Management District, our Executive Director, Dr. Anne Shortell, and all of our staff, we wish you congratulations, and we hope that you will continue to apply for these grants as we have opportunities coming up in September, and again, next year in March. So, Madam Mayor, if I may present this check to you.
Absolutely. Thank you. (Applause). All right, if you guys could slide down so we can be sure to get the seal in the background. That's great. All right, we're gonna have to have a long session here, so y'all start smiling. One, two, three. One, two, three. Let me get a couple more. All right. One, two, three. One, two, three. One, two, three. And one more. One, two, three. city staff. That ribbon cutting, not only is it like, not very normally exciting, but it actually was. It really demonstrates why we can go through a hurricane and not sustain major flood damage. And so these projects are really critical to the overall quality of life for our residents. So, thank you to the Water Management District. Thank you again, Mr. Troiano, for being here to present the check. We look forward to future partnerships. Thank you. Okay, we'll now move to Agenda Item Number Three, which is a proclamation recognizing Bryce Wright for his service to humanity and for his courageous and selfless efforts to preserve human life. Councilmember Clufus will be presenting today.
I'm gonna just start off very briefly by introducing this. Did you want to do it, Mr. Landen?
Well, I have a story. I have a story to tell that...
He does have a story. I'll step back.
I gotta, can I have a little fun with this one? We have a rule that when someone gets injured in the workplace, they have to come up to my conference room with supervisors, and we talk about how the accident happened, and how do we prevent it, and what do we do for the whole organization to try to make sure that it doesn't happen again. So, and one of the type of workers' comp claims we have is exposure. So if you have a firefighter that's exposed to bodily fluids, then they have to go get checked out, and there's some precautions. So, that's actually considered a workers' comp claim. Well, Mr. Bryce, you're gonna learn, was exposed to some bodily fluids. And I was aware of the incident, but did not really know. So, the staff comes up, supervisors, et cetera, first time I've met Bryce, and they made it sound like, okay, well, we had this accident. So I'm doing my typical, "All right, so what'd you do? And how can we prevent this?" And then they all started laughing because they got a real kick out of the fact that this was not your typical injury, but it was more of a hero moment. So, with that, you know, it's, we decided to carry forth and recognize Bryce today. So, Mr. Clufus, if you'll take it from there, I'd appreciate it.
I would like to think that I would've done the same situation, but we can't be sure. So, thank you. Mayor, Council? Whereas, on June 15, 2017, City of Palm Coast Utility Technician Bryce Wright was on his way back to the utility shop when he witnessed a serious vehicle accident at the intersection of Palm Coast Parkway and Pine Lakes Parkway. And whereas, one of the vehicles, a pickup truck, had flipped and was smoking and sparking in a manner that indicated it might catch fire. And whereas, Mr. Wright attempted to open the driver's side door, but it was stuck. So he got a tool from his work truck, broke the vehicle window, and pulled the driver to safety. And whereas, when Mr. Wright was unable to get the passenger out, he and another passerby tried to flip the truck back over. When that didn't work, several people lifted the vehicle just enough so that Mr. Wright could pull the passenger out. And whereas, both the driver and the passenger were treated at the hospital and have recovered with no serious effects. And whereas, Mr. Wright stepped forward in a stressful emergency situation to assist these accident victims and possibly save their lives. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Palm Coast, Florida, that City of Palm Coast Utility Technician Bryce Wright is commended for his service to humanity and for his courageous and selfless efforts to preserve human life. Dated this 15th of August, 2017, City of Palm Coast, Florida, signed, Mayor Melissa Holland.[579.61][579.61](Applause).
This is your application to the Fire Department.[585.12][585.12](Laughter). But it's tradition in our world, you get a little ribbon, you get a little medal, you wear something that signifies what you did. On behalf of the Mayor, the Council, the Fire Department, the men and women there, and the citizens, we'd like to give you this award as being our hero for the week. Congratulations. Thank you.[615.41][615.41](Applause).
Thank you.
Speech?
(Laughter). I want to say thank you today for having me up here. I really appreciate it. And I was just doing, I don't consider myself a hero or anything. I was just doing what I wish any one of us in this room would've did, so I want to say thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you.[638.11][638.11](Applause). Mayor, City Council, while you're getting the pictures, I'd also, to show you how humble he is, once the paramedics got there from the rescue team, he just got back in his pickup and drove away and went back to work. And a supervisor told him he had to go get checked out once they found out he had blood on him. So, that's, you know, rather amazing.[663.32][663.32](Laughter).
Oh, my gosh. I'm gonna be right symmetrically. I'm telling you.[667.32][667.32](Laughter).
Thank you again. Okay, we'll now move to Agenda Item Number Four, which is a presentation on 2017 internship program. Mr. Landen.
Yeah, this is a program that we really started last year. SEMI got it going last year. But since I'm in a storytelling mood, I'll tell the story of a very young, talented lady who graduated from FPC. She applied to Princeton. And Princeton requires you to interview with alumni before you can apply. And at that time, Mayor Nets was alumni from Princeton, and he had volunteered to interview potential candidates to go into Princeton. And so he met this young lady, and I'm afraid I don't remember her name, but she went off to college in California somewhere, and then wrote an email to Mayor Nets at that time and asked if there was any summer internships at the city. And she forwarded her resume, which was extremely impressive, and I got quick, two-letter answers from everybody when I forwarded around, and that was, "No, we don't have any internship programs here." And so then that was kind of a wake-up call and said, "If you have this kind of young talent that is from Palm Coast, that wants to come back here and work, at least for the summer, we need to try to accommodate as much as we can to try to bring those people back." And, by the way, the young lady, Beau, forwarded on to one of our local engineering firms, and she was hired the next day. So she got the internship and probably a better match because she was in engineering program, so it was a huge success for her. And so then I came up with an idea that we needed to hire a couple interns to put together an internship program. And so that's what we did last year. You may recall that. We had five interns. Maeve, who was gonna make the presentation today, was one of those that helped us put together a program that really put together a handbook because we have to be ahead of the game. You know, looking for an intern come April, May doesn't work. You know, they're already snagged up or already have summer plans at that point. So Maeve put it together. The departments got serious about it. We ended up with 16 or 17 positions. I think it was 17. One of them didn't work out, so we ended up with 16 interns this year. We had over 300 applications, and it's been a huge success. And it's been really great, I know here around City Hall and the other departments, seeing the young people actually adding value, because each one of them has a project, or two, or three. It's not a shadowing program. They all are given a project to be completed by the end of the summer. And it's really been a great program. We do pay them, and it's well worth the dollars for that and the things they do. So Maeve has been asked to highlight some of the things our interns did this summer, and how they've added value to the program, and maybe answer any questions you may have. So Maeve, take it from here.
Good morning, Mayor and City Council. As Mr. Landen said, my name is Maeve Danine, and I am an Administrative Services and Economic Development Intern. We had 16 internship positions this summer. Our 16 college interns from schools both in and out of the state of Florida worked in multiple departments throughout the city. As you may recall, one of our goals for the internship program was to recruit our local talent. And so one of the ways we did that was to market to the alumni of our Flagler school system. We're happy to say that 10 of our 16 interns were graduates of FPC and Matanzas. And so this presentation will give a highlight and a brief overview of the projects that they've been working on the past few months. One thing you may note is that many of the projects were worked on collaboratively between the interns. Some of them were from interns within the same department, some were from interns within multiple departments in order to address different aspects of city function. And so this project will demonstrate what they've been working on together. As it's nearing the end of the summer, some of our interns have returned to school while the remaining are in the audience behind me. And so this presentation will include voice-overs so that you can hear from the interns themselves what they've been working on here at the city. This summer, I worked on a variety of projects. These projects included legislative bill tracking for the 2017 session, preliminary designs for a new sports complex, a grant application, and compliance tracking for our economic development contracts. Another project I worked on in the Central Services Division included updating policies and procedures in order to improve operations for purchasing contracts, as well as risk management. One of my favorite responsibilities this summer was as the intern team leader. I enjoyed working with the interns on a variety of assignments and learning about their experiences here at the city.
One of the projects I worked on this summer was retail recruitment. I contacted about 40 retailers periodically throughout the summer to outline the benefits of opening in Palm Coast. This included contacting these retailers by email and phone and sending market updates. Another project I worked on this summer was researching how to attract high-tech startups to Palm Coast. This included writing a white paper and creating a presentation for City Council about various strategies the city could use to attract high-tech startups. The projects that the communications and marketing interns worked on this summer was to create a virtual Citizens Academy to supplement the real Citizens Academy using PowerPoint, photographs, videos, graphs, and charts. The purpose of this project is to provide general information about each department in the city and help Palm Coast residents learn more about their local government. There are separate modules for each department describing the day-to-day operations, the services they provide, and how they affect the city.
One of the projects I worked on this summer was research and data analysis for the MS-4 permit. This included analyzing the original sampling stations, the trends in common surface water pollutants, and organizing the documentation for the Year Three Annual Report. Another project I worked on was the Capital City Project to widen specific sections of Old Kings Road. This included assembling informational packages that were sent to the businesses and housing units directly located along Old Kings. These packages included appraisal reports and educational material concerning the real estate acquisition process.
One of the projects I worked on this summer was a modification design for the WEAR W-1. The purpose of the project is to install a remote-operated water control gate to the WEAR that will allow a stormwater operator to control the water levels of the canal. The result would mean enhanced surface water control, reduce downstream erosion, and protected infrastructure. Through research and analyzation of data, I created construction plans and drawings that will be implemented for this specific WEAR, as well as similar projects in the
One of the projects I worked on this summer was to create the MS-4 Stormwater Permit Web Map Application. This included creating an interactive web mapping application for the Engineering Department that satisfies the guidelines for the MS-4 Stormwater Permit. Another project I worked on was to set up an ArcGIS Collector App, which will eventually eliminate the need for pencils, paper, and possibly even spreadsheets. This included creating a web mapping application that is synced with the ArcGIS Collector System to allow field technicians to have access to up-to-date maps that they can reference and edit on job sites or in the office.
The project that the Human Resources interns worked on this summer was the Compensation Package for 2017. The first part of the project was to conduct a comprehensive review of all of the city's job descriptions. This included shadowing employees to check that the duties and responsibilities depicted in the job description match the reality of the work being performed. We interviewed staff from different positions in order to gain a better understanding of the skills and knowledge that was required to perform the job efficiently.
Our second project was to help with the implementation of the Certification Pay Policy and the Reclassification of Multiple Positions. Certification Pay benefits the city employees through receiving compensation for their skills, incentivizing employees to pursue a higher education, and encouraging cross-training within the city. We played a role in the reclassification of positions around the city through running salary surveys and wage comparisons with other cities. From this information, we recommended salary increases to certain positions to ensure that the city is paying a fair and competitive wage.
One of the projects the IT intern worked on this summer was a project for the city's centrality website titled Total Wellness Challenge. The project included designing web pages for employees to input their exercises, as well as track their overall points. This way, employees can check their rankings on the overall and individual leaderboard pages. Another project that he worked on was the website portion of the Virtual Citizen Academy. He designed the website layout so that citizens would have easy access to the presentation
One of the projects I worked on this summer was to organize and plan the Parks and Recreation Senior Games. This includes managing the facilities, budgeting for events, and hospitality management at the events. Another project that I worked on was Sports Alliance. I was part of the group rebuilding the memberships, goals, and objectives of the organization.
One of the projects that the marketing intern for Parks and Recreation Department worked on this summer was to improve social media accounts for the department's programs and events. This included evaluating other city and county Parks and Recreation Departments to determine how they utilize their social media accounts for events. Another project she worked on was to create a sponsorship packet to establish a formal process to attract local businesses and organizations to become financial partners with Parks and
The project that the Public Works interns worked on this summer was an operational manual for the Parks and Medians Division that will serve as a best practices tool to current and future employees. The manual consists of qualitative and quantitative expectations and standards of the maintenance practices used in the upkeep of the city parks and street medians. This project included researching of current practices, along with literature sources, in order to create the manual.
The standards in the manual aid to increase consistency, safety, and correct standards in the City of Palm Coast. This project included the development and organization of weekly online operational logs for employees to utilize on the job site in order to improve efficiency. Another important aspect of this project was the creation of a training program involving city standards, safety, and field operations. This program includes the best practices for maintenance principles and techniques necessary to preserve high-quality service to the community.
During my time with the city, I worked on quite a few different projects, but mine most notable were the two master plans I completed for the Utility Department. The reused master plan was a hypothetical five-to-10-year plan for the wastewater department that analyzes how reclaimed water is utilized and will be utilized in the future for Palm Coast, while the telemetry sanitization master plan encompasses the different divisions of water, wastewater, and stormwater. Telemetry is how every pump slash lip station, wastewater plant, water plant, well sites, and stormwater outfalls are monitored, maintained, and operated. The purpose for the master plan is to sanitize to an easier, more reliable, and more cost-effective
So, as I said, this was a brief overview of the projects that the interns have been working on for the past few months. On behalf of the interns, I can say that we found our internships to be a valuable experience, and we hope that the city found value in the projects that we worked on, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you guys may have.
Wow. Well, first of all, I mean, wow.[1416.21][1416.21](Applause). Any questions for our interns? I just want to say, I mean, having spent a lot of time around City Hall and seeing the work of our interns, not only was it unbelievably impressive, but I learned a lot and gained a lot of valuable knowledge from them as well. So, we really want to thank your dedication to our city, to helping Palm Coast create a beautiful community in the future. So, we look forward to many years to come, and hopefully, maybe future employment at one time. So, thank you again. Can we do a photo with all the interns? Yes, all right. Sounds good.[1465.21][1465.21](Laughter).
Jack, you're too old to be an intern.[1468.33][1468.33](Laughter).
(Inaudible). 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 (Inaudible).
One, two, three. Congratulations.
I think we switched chairs.
I'm like, why is my chair still?
Okay, we'll now move to Agenda Item Number Five, which is a first reading. Mr. Reichman?
Yes, Madam Mayor, this is an ordinance to the City Council of City of Palm Coast for extending portions of the temporary moratorium within the jurisdictional limits of the city of Palm Coast relating to medical marijuana treatment center facilities dispensing medical marijuana. This ordinance read adopts findings of facts prohibits medical marijuana treatment centers specifically dispensing facilities during extended moratorium period. Direct staff to develop proposed land development code provisions and other recommendations regarding such dispensing facilities. Last of this ordinance provides for penalties, severability conflicts, and effective date. This is first reading.
Okay, council members, any discussion or questions on the ordinance before we take public comment?
I have one question.
Yes.
Mr. Landon, are we, do we have any details on what Flagler Beach has decided to do as far as implementation and extension of their moratorium? I wasn't able to discern the details.
I have not. Ray, have you heard anything from Flagler Beach?
No, not really, but I think what they're leaning towards is allowing them now on the beach side, or not on the beach side, but on the land side.
Any member of the public wish to make public comment on Agenda Item Number Five? Please do so at this time. Okay.
With this marijuana, do we know how many patients would be using the marijuana? Because, you know, if you don't have enough patients for one outlet, then it doesn't pay to put two outlets. So, before you do anything, I think you should try to make a determination on how many people in Palm Coast are going to use these facilities. And then, if somebody comes in from Volusia County, are they going to be serviced also? Or is that just the station, or whatever you want to call it, right? Is that going to be for Palm Coast residents or for all residents? But I think we should know for sure how many we're going to have, and this way we can determine how many we need and where we need them. And I don't think there should be anywhere in the residential areas or by schools and churches. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker. Get those fixed. Okay. So, that'll close public comment. So, Jack, to your question, this will be a private industry, so we don't determine how many, although the state has dictated that each dispensary per community, per grower would be allocated so many dispensaries. So, we figured if Palm Coast gets one, we may get one, but the market will dictate that. So, they're utilizing those as a pharmacy, so when a doctor prescribes medical marijuana to a patient, if we have a dispensary opened in our community, I'm sure they'll utilize that dispensary. If someone from Volusia wants to drive up to use our dispensary, that's totally up to them. So, we don't determine how many are going to be needed or how many are required for our community. It's market-driven, just as any other pharmacy is. I think that answers.
It does. If I could add, the state statute, which was passed in special session, Mayor, there was some accommodation for the anticipated number of folks that would possibly be wanting to use medical marijuana, and it would be that they would, the state would monitor that, and depending upon the growth of the demand, that would have a play into how many licenses that the state would issue for growers, and then that would, of course, since there's, I believe, 25 dispensing facilities for each licensed grower and producer, then that would be the tie-in between the demand and the number of the producers. So, that, there is some tie-in, but it's not something we can control.
And to this ordinance, it does decide that it's not going into residential?
Well, this ordinance is simply to extend the moratorium, but we received, we received direction, staff and Ray and our office, Ray's department and my office are working on preparing to bring back to you some regulations that would be consistent with the state dictates, the limitations that are imposed upon us, keeping in mind, as Mr. Carroll said and with this council directed to us, that we would be changing our land development regulations such that pharmacies, as they will be defined, will not be able to locate in the residential neighborhoods. I think it's RN is the zoning district that would be the specific zoning district that we are paying attention to in our modified land development regulations.
So, yeah, Jack, this will go through a whole process as far as land use. Sorry, I don't know.
We don't have any more. The ones that we have are broken, so we got to get those repaired.
Okay. Okay. I don't know what to do.
Mayor, Mr. Carroll, I'm happy to meet with you after the meeting, and I can try to answer your questions at that time.
All right, thank you. Okay, I will entertain a motion to approve.
Move approval?
Sure, second.
Second.
Motion made, moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, it passes unanimously. We'll now move to resolution recognizing and confirming legislation in progress regarding medical marijuana treatment center dispensing facilities. Mr. Landon?
This is, I call it belt and suspenders. This is something our attorney asked for that just helps make sure that we don't have any applications until City Council takes action on the ordinance that's coming your way in October.
Any questions, council?
That's not going to work.
Question or concern would be, would it be possible just to collect details before the next reading on what Flagler Beach intends to do as far as extending?
We can, I'll ask them and send it out. It's going to be preliminary until they actually take action, just like anything else, like, you know, until they actually vote on it.
What about Benel? I mean, we talked about Flagler Beach, but Benel, what about them also?
Haven't heard from, we can do Benel and Flagler Beach and Flagler County then.
And from the county as well, obviously.
We'll get, we'll get the, where they are in the process for those three. Once again, it's until they take final action, it's just an update.
Okay. Any member of the public wish to make public comment on Agenda Item Number Six? Please do so at this time.
Good morning, everyone. Donald O'Brien, County Commissioner. I was at the Flagler Beach meeting, and where they stand is they did not take action on their second reading for their moratorium. They, whatever the legal term is, they rescinded it, took a vote to rescind it, and the discussion was to allow, to, they gave staff direction to work on the land development code to allow for the dispensaries in commercial retail, and which consists of everything on the west side of the intercoastal. So, that's where they stand. They're working on that. City of Benel has not taken any action yet. Flagler County, from what I understand, staff is working on redraft of our land development code, and we expect that within the next 60 days.
Thank you. I appreciate your.
Thank you very much.
Next speaker. Seeing none, I'll close public comment. I'll entertain a motion.
Move approval?
Second. Moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, it passes unanimously. Agenda Item Number Seven, a resolution approving a concession agreement with TCC Marlow Enterprises Incorporated, DBA, the Green Lion Cafe for Palm Harbor Golf Course. Mr. Landon?
Mayor, City Council, your last workshop and business meeting, actually, two workshops ago in your business meeting, we outlined kind of the game plan for what we have plans out of the golf course as city takes over the management. We are contracting out the food services and also the actual grounds maintenance. Both of those are now on your agenda, the contract. The grounds maintenance is pretty basic. We already went over that last meeting. The food services was still being negotiated, and so I asked Beau and Alex to come and just highlight some of the terms of what we've worked out with the Golden Lion, or here they're going to call themselves the Green Lion. Beau, if you'll take it from here.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. As Mr. Landon stated, you know, first draft of the concession agreement was very from our side of things. We've, I think we're on draft five and gone back and forth quite a bit, and part of the reason is the Green Lion is making quite an investment in opening this concession agreement. So, I just wanted to go and walk through some of the changes that are in the red line version in your agenda packet. First, the majority of changes have to do with the term of the agreement and termination of the agreement, and the term essentially is a five-year agreement with the tenant's option, which would be Green Lion's option for additional five years, and then after that would be the city and Green Lion's option for the additional five years. The thought behind that is Green Lion's going to be investing, from what we're told, is somewhere north of $100,000 to get the concession open. You know, that includes purchasing a liquor license, training staff, they're going to be doing some renovations on the interior of the facility, so they are making a significant investment in opening up this concession. So, that was part of the changes you'll see in the red line version. In addition, we outlined the operating hours, the minimum hours, because once again, this is part of the golf course operation, and of course, golfers expect some level of service when it comes to food and beverage, and Green Lion is agreeable to those, so we outlined those as well. Also, we talk about termination for convenience. If the city terminates for convenience, that we would refund the previous year's lease payments, and that's because, once again, Green Lion's making a significant investment for cities to terminate for convenience, felt there need to be some fairness there in that, in that term. Finally, with regards to the base rent, we made several, sorry, before I get that, with regard to the owner improvements, the prior version, the city was going to make improvements to the facility and then charge those facilities over time back to Green Lion. They've since decided that they'll just make the improvements themselves, that's the way they own the improvements should the lease terminate, so we made those changes in the agreement, and you'll see that in Exhibit A. And then finally, Exhibit B, we changed the base rent. Before, it was a base rent of $250 plus revenue sharing. Green Lion just felt, has some stability to the cost to their operations, just to make it a base rent, and so that figure's now $500 with an annual adjustment, and that's consistent with other concession agreements we've seen in the county. For example, the barbecue place and captains out on the island, that's what they pay. So, we looked at those kind of for fairness, and our finance director tells me consistently that if we make any money from rent, that's more than what the concession currently makes under Kemper. So, we feel it's a positive, a good partner with a lot of experience in running a restaurant, and so we're excited for this opportunity. So, if you have any questions, Council, I know Alex and myself are available to answer any questions.
Any questions?
A couple, actually. What, one of the, one of the primary concerns in the area by residents is, you know, they look at the Golden Lion, and then they think, you know, that is what, you know, their big party type of thing, music loud, so the operational hours are what?
So, the operational hours are minimum of required, I mean, this is in, let's see, Section Three, Subsection F, is from 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. December through March, and 7:00 a.m. through 6:00 p.m. through November, and then the tenant should have the option to extend those with city approval, not before 7:00 a.m. and up to 11:00 p.m. at night.
Up to 11:00.
Up to 11:00. And the Green Lion's very aware of our ordinance, I sent them that as well, and so, you know, it's a balance between, we want the restaurant to be successful, obviously, and that includes, you know, dinnertime service that extends, and then when you look at some hours of, I mean, sometimes it gets dark here at 8:00, 8:30 at night, you may have even golfers there, hopefully, spending money at the golf course. So, in addition, we've preserved the right for termination for convenience with some notice provisions, so if it does become that much of an issue, we have that option as the city as well. So, we've preserved that right. I'll tell you, the operator is very aware of both the sensitivity of the golf course, they want golf to be successful because it'll be successful to their operation, and we've made them very aware of neighborhood concerns. So, it'll be, it'll be something we work through, but this agreement preserves our rights to address that with them if it becomes an issue.
And what is the lease amount?
The lease amount is $500 per month. Let me get the exact, Mr. Nobiel. And then, beginning on year two, it'll increase $25 a month every year thereafter.
Okay. And what's the square footage?
That's roughly, I'd say 400 at best. We are letting them have access to the patio outside, but they are wanting to do some renovations inside so that it does look more like a seating area for people to come into versus just some tables and chairs.
This is not a full-blown kitchen kind of operation.
And, Mr. Nobiel, and it's hard to compare to if you were looking at, you know, leasing a restaurant somewhere else in the city, it's just a different set of facts. That's why we tended to look at other concession agreements.
Well, that actually, that actually aligns with 400 square feet. I mean, that's, I, I'm, you know, I had never been there, and my brain is going, you know, salsas or something like that. I'm thinking, I'm thinking, holy mackerel, I want to rent that. I'm sorry, I'm done, no.
Okay. Questions? Okay, we'll open up to the public. Any member of the public wish to make comment on Agenda Item Number Seven? Please do so at this time.
John Nett's, Palm Coast. Two issues, one I don't think is avoidable, but I need you to be aware of it. I've been led to believe that the current employees are going to be terminated as of the 27th of this month, and the restaurant will not reopen for at least a month thereafter. That's a hiatus that's going to affect the re-recruitment of customers for that facility, something that I'd like to see the Green Lion expedite, whatever modifications they're going to make, so that they can be closed as little as possible. There are people that routinely use that facility. The second thing that concerns me, they are going to make improvements, which are unnamed at this point, and the ownership they retain, but we own the building, so if they're making structural modifications, I'd like to know how that's going to be facilitated. How can they own something that they have attached to a facility that the city owns? Thank you.
Next speaker.
Jack Carroll, Palm Coast. How much of this, are we, are we into a situation where, excuse me, are we into a situation where if they don't make enough money, we're going to subsidize them? You know, suppose that, you know, we're not doing very well at the golf courses it is, because, you know, we're still losing money, and we're going to lose money this year, and we're going to lose money next year, and the, and the citizens that don't golf and don't play tennis are going to support a measly 100 or 150 people, which is, I find that a little bit on the ridiculous side, why I should pay for somebody else's enjoyment? If they want to play, if they want to play, you pay the, anyway, come back to the original. Are we going to subsidize them in any way if they are not making their quota?
Thank you. Next speaker. Close public comment. Beau, if you could address both the month closure as well as the changes that are going to be made and how that ownership will be viewed?
Sure. So, of course, there is going to be, you know, a delay in opening the full concept of Green Lion. What we've discussed with the Green Lion is offering some sort of in-between service in the meantime, and they've been amenable to that, and it's something I think we've talked about several times with them. So, I think you'll see a reduced, you know, menu and options during the time in which they're, of course, doing a little bit of renovations, but they do plan on, you know, trying to, they don't want to lose customers either, they're in business, so they're going to do their best. As far as, I should do a better job of outlining the improvements, the tenant is basically going to be making cosmetic improvements on the interior of the building and then equipment. So, obviously, the equipment they can take with them that they purchase, the interior improvements, it would be like kind of when you repaint the inside of an apartment or a house, you obviously can't take the paint off the wall. So, you know, as far as ownership of those improvements, it would be, you know, what's obviously feasible. And then, as far as to address Mr. Carroll's comments on the rent and would we be responsible if they don't make money, just, once again, this is a change in the model for golf. We're contracting out these services, whereas currently, in the Kemper-run golf course where they're running the concessions, yes, if they lose money, we basically make the shortfall up. This is a different model, that is not the way we're proceeding forward. This is a concession agreement, which essentially a lease, which means they pay us, and whatever they do as far as revenues, profits, and losses is theirs, and theirs alone. So, we are no way tied, as the city, with whether this business entity makes money or loses money. It's quite different, it's not a continuation of the Kemper model, so to speak. I hope that addressed that question as well, Mayor.
Does? Does?
Question?
Go ahead.
Beau, to the point of employees, how many employees are there now?
And food and beverage, or just overall?
That are going to be let go when the, when we shut down the...
So, as of right now, we're actually in the process of actually not letting anyone go from the standpoint of who is currently employed from Kemper. We are actually going through the process of interviewing all the Kemper employees now for the exact same position they have now. So we've actually already hired, I believe, eight new staff members that are in the system right now for like golf cart attendant starters, the ones that'll be working, the facility clerks at the front desk. All those will be primarily Kemper employees that now will be city employees. From my understanding, once we agree on contracts, because part of our agreement with Kemper is we can't directly reach out to their employees, we either have to post a position, they apply, or they can ask us. So until we have an agreement with the company, whether it's Billy Casper or the Green Lion, they cannot have any interaction with those staff. I do know that Green Lion is interested in interviewing the current food and beverage staff that's already there, but to that point, until they know that they will be taking over, they can't move any further at this moment.
Okay. But the plan is to try and maintain those people?
Yes.
Okay.
Your questions or comments?
Just to add to that, I mean, I think having a known commodity such as the Green Lion, that's been an established business in Flagler County for 25 years, I'm certain that they will look at the profit and the bottom line and try to make this a successful private entity. So, to your point, Beau, this is a different model that we're working off of, and hopefully it'll increase users over there in the restaurant, maybe neighbors will have a neighborhood facility as well. I just think having the continual open dialogue will make a difference. I went through this in Bing's Landing when we first decided to do Captain's Barbecue. There were some transitionary periods in the beginning that we wanted to maintain the rustic character of that park, it was a preserve, to not take away from that. And so I think that's going to be critical to ensure that constant communication does take effect, that this is an amenity that we take pride in, in our community. And it's a service that we do provide. There are 44,000 rounds of golf played annually at this facility, so we want to make sure we're maintaining the character, improving the asset that we do own and not taking away from it. So just keep that in mind.
If nothing else, I will entertain a motion.
Move approval.
Seconded. Moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, it passes unanimously. Agenda item number eight, resolution approving amending the council policy and procedures to allow for public input at 6:00 p.m. at all evening meetings with a time-certain start of 6:30 p.m. for the rest of the items on the agenda.
This is something City Council asked, I think the title says it all. Virginia, it's my understanding is that this will require an ordinance change also? Is that what you were saying? So, the ordinance says you start at 6:30, so this would actually, next step would be to bring an ordinance to you. But if you approve this resolution, we'll get that process started.
This resolution is just amending your council rules and procedures to be consistent with what you asked us to do for the, so the public would, in response to the public's request to have a more convenient opportunity to give input to the city council. But as a city clerk and city manager have indicated, there's another technical step that needs to be done, and that is to make sure that, since your council dates and times are specified by ordinance, and we're changing that from 6:30 on the first business meeting of the month to six, then we'll need to do that, just technical.
Any questions or comments?
I, I'm a little confused. This is just affecting one meeting, right? And the real concern are the workshops, because those are the ones that go long. That was my thought, beginning, you know, I, I thought we were going to do this for all our meetings, not just for one meeting. I just, but I don't know, you know.
It's up to City Council.
Yeah, I just don't know, I thought that's where we left off, though, last week. I don't remember just thinking, one meeting?
What we could do, I think it's because we were talking mostly about the night and changing it to morning, so it might have been interpreted that we were discussing that. But we, I mean, if we want to discuss it and starting public and then starting city business or even city discussion, it's 9:30, I think that's doable, we can just...
Yeah, because I think the real problem is people sitting around through the workshops, which go four, five hours. Business meeting's not so bad. I still like it in the business meeting, but I think the workshop, and I think what the mayor suggested is a good idea, is that we start, what she suggested, we start nine o'clock for, like we do regularly, but we make that the agenda and then start the regular meeting at 9:30.
Yeah, that's fine.
Is there a consensus?
I, you know, I don't mind, are we talking about every meeting, though? Because again, we've got, we're pushing everybody else back, like the interns, like Mr. Bryce and...
Well, I think that's why having a time certain of 9:30, where people know when the business part of the meeting is going to start and having a half an hour allotted for public comment makes sense.
But that would, that's an important part from business standpoint of dealing with people, you know, like I've said, it's like having reservations at a restaurant, and then all the walk-ins get to go ahead of you, and then when they're finished, then you get to sit down. That doesn't work very well. But if, if you started at nine for public comment, with the understanding at 9:30, anybody that still wants to make public comment, they'll have to wait till the end of the meeting, or at six and then 6:30, that type of thing. Then the people who come, like Bryce is a good example, or Jim from the Water Management District, having them sit an hour here when they thought they were going to be...
And they know, right, 9:30, like now, you're going to go on second.
Right. Yeah. That's the concept. That also means that nobody's here, then you take a break for, until 9:30 or 6:30.
Well, there's bagels and donuts, I don't care.
So, you know, we had, it was interesting, we had that debate as to, were they talking about just the night meeting, and they want to do this the day meeting, so it's up to you all as to how you want to do this. We just need more feedback.
My suggestion would be is that if you want us to expand the scope of what's been brought to you this morning, then my suggestion is we go ahead and table this. Because if you look at your current council rules and procedures with regard to workshops, it specifies, and this is on page 10 of 11 of your agenda packet, "Public input at city council workshops shall be limited to the items on that workshop agenda. Such public input at city council workshops shall be conducted after the council's consideration of its agenda items and before reports." So you have that specified as to, as to the timeframe. So, so to get, to comply with your requests, I need to go back with Virginia and modify this resolution, as well as to change it so that meeting like we're having right now, we're going to need to change that as well to make sure that we start at nine, if that's your direction for, because all we've done right now is just the night business meeting. That's all, that's the only change that I made, and I apologize, that was, that was my understanding.
Yeah, I, I think we left, like the mayor said, I think it was, it was, yeah, we were talking two different things about switching mornings to nights, and so it just got, my thought, I'm just saying.
No, no, I appreciate, appreciate the clarification, but I guess, again, all I'm suggesting is that we might want to just table this and then let us bring it back what you want, and...
And how we do it, quite frankly, when we did make the changes on the county, was we left up to 30 minutes, but it didn't necessarily, we didn't say we have to start a business meeting at 9:30. We just said, well, allot 30 minutes for this public participation. So some meetings that there are maybe only one person for the three minutes, it didn't make sense to wait and start at 9:30.
Another option is some of these items, we don't have guests that are coming, so we could do...
But the fact of the matter is, I mean, I think having someone wait 25 minutes or even 15 minutes or maybe none, it, I mean, I don't know, I think setting it to, I think it's fine if we're starting at six and in the evening and then going 6:30 evenings, making sure everyone can attend, like we spoke about. But I'm not sure, I, I think we just allotted it for 30 minutes to say, then we have to start getting business going. That's, and then if we went over the 30 minutes, then you'll have another opportunity at the end of the meeting.
How about for workshops, we just start at nine and we put the citizens' comments at the beginning, and when they're done, you move on?
That's fine. I think we're all at the workshops anyway.
But for the business meeting, which is when we have the formal presentations, we have the citizens' comments at nine, but the meeting starts at 9:30? Or you want to just flow into six or 6:30 or nine and 9:30 for business? But workshops just flow?
I just, I don't know, I'd hate for us to sit here 25 minutes and take a break.
Okay.
It just...
Well, I think, we could play it by ear. I mean, we could set it up to play it by ear, like you said, if we have no one, you know, that we're waiting on, we can go ahead and get started. But if we do, we'll give that 6:30 and 9:30 timeline.
If we have guests, which we usually do towards the beginning, we need to tell them what time to be here. You can't tell them to be here at 9:30 and then you have their item at nine, or...
The point is to not go over 30 minutes, to allot 30-minute timeframes for public comment.
Could I make this suggestion, and I'm sticking, sticking my nose right in the lines, Ken, but, but, I mean, maybe you could just change that portion of your council rules and procedures, so instead of having your citizen comments at the beginning of the business meetings, you have them earlier than they currently are in the business meetings. In other words, you can have the reserved diners first, and then, and then have the walk-ins, and then have the rest of your business meeting. I mean, I know that's complicating the discussion this morning, but that's another option. I've seen some...
I hear what you're saying, but I think that's going to...
I will tell you, it's worked very effectively at the county. When we made the changes in all workshops, we have public participation at the beginning and the end of the meeting, and we just allocate it up to 30 minutes, is what we did. So I don't think we need to overcomplicate this. I think it's just saying, let's have, let's move public comment to the beginning and the end.
Got it.
Of every meeting.
I'm in. Okay, so...
And, but to allot 30 minutes up at the top. And then, again, I mean, I understand we don't want to make people wait for, for 25 minutes, we're not saying, let's wait for six hours.
Then, so are we starting at six or 6:30 in the evening?
I like what we have now, the six, I don't want to push that out a half hour. Let's move that back.
Start at six, so we're still going to proceed with the idea of starting the evening meeting at six, and we'll just start with public comment. Okay.
And then the mornings at nine with a half hour.
And then nine, and then we start with public comment?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Is there, so we'll have to table this?
Yes.
So, I need a motion to table this item.
So move.
Seconded. And it's for time certain, or do we have to have time certain?
No, not for time certain. I mean, we're going to be able to have this for you, either for your next workshop or at your next, I mean, your next business meeting. It's going to come right back.
We'll put it on your next workshop, so just to make sure we're on target this time before...
Do I take public comment, or...
No, if you table it.
Okay.
So moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, it passes unanimously. We'll now move to agenda item, or the consent agenda. Any member of the public wish to make comment on either nine, 10, 11, or 12? Please do so at this time.
Nine and 10.
Come up, Jack, we're not removing you, you can come up and speak to the items.
Because I want to hear what you got to say first. I mean, I can't comment on something that you're going to talk about.
These are consent agenda items.
That's a consent agenda.
We don't discuss consent agenda, they're business items, so if you want to comment on those items, you have the ability to comment on those items.
Well, why can't I hear what you had to say first?
Because we are not pulling that item. Any member...
Well, I'm pulling the item.
That's fine, you have...
See, but I'm pulling the item so that you can tell me what's going on. I don't want to argue with you, but...
I think he said seven and eight, four and nine and 10.
No, he said nine and 10.
Oh, he did say nine and 10.
Okay. You've got the golf course with Billy Casper Incorporated. If they, this is for maintenance, and, you know, I'd like to know how much we're going to pay them for the maintenance. What is this going to cost us? You know, so far, it's costing us, what, a million dollars a year to operate the golf course? So, why, why does Billy Casper going to, what are they going to do for us that's going to save us money and maybe get the golf course to run on its own? Do I come up 10 now, or...
You can go ahead.
Or do you wait for your comments?
No, you can start with your comments for 10.
With this, well, is this, is this only to, to approve the agreement with this, with Ms. Cody? Because if that's, that's the case, then I'm okay. But if you're going to talk about the charter, then that's a different story, right? So, with Cody, that's okay, I approve that.
Okay. Thank you for your comments. Anyone else want to make comment on any consent agenda items? Please do so at this time.
Good morning. John Brady, Palm Coast. I need help to understand item 10. Section 10 of the city charter says the charter may be amended in accordance with the provisions of the Municipal Home Rule Act, Chapter 16. So, when the framers were talking about this, that was a maybe. When they talk about how to do it, they're very specific. A five-member charter review committee shall be appointed. Each district council member shall appoint one member from his or her district, and the mayor shall appoint one member at large. Florida Statute 166.031, Paragraph 3, "A municipality may amend its charter pursuant to this section, notwithstanding charter provisions to the contrary." I offer that there are charter amendments to the contrary, and therefore, the method of, that you are proposing to do it is not in keeping with the charter. Thank you.
Anyone else? We'll close public comment. Who wants, Mr. Landen, would you answer the question about the cost of the contract with Billy Casper?
Yes, it's, actually, the way this works is that we will be purchasing the fertilizer and that type of thing directly, therefore, we don't know the exact cost, but the, the estimate for, for this program is about $630,000 a year. The idea is that we believe it will be more efficient this way than what we did with Kemper. We will still be managing the course, which means we'll be monitoring this work and actually having a lot of control over what they do, but they will be managing the people and have the expertise to make sure that grass that grows very, very short will be green. And it's not an easy thing to do, if you, if you know what I mean, so...
The second point is, the first part of it, we are approving the contract with Marilyn Karati.
Yes, this is nothing about, anything with the charter other than just signing the contract. It's a first step that gets this process started. It actually does, it's not part of the process, it just kicks it off with the facilitator. And you met her last week, she has huge qualifications, in my opinion.
And to Mr. Brady's comments, I would ask that our...
Sure, Mayor. Sure. And Mr. Brady is correct, he read portions of the relevant sections in the charter and the code, but let me try to provide some clarification. The charter provides that it may be amended in accordance with the provisions of Chapter 166, and Mr. Brady was correct, if you take a look at 166.031, and it's, and then it goes on in subsection 3, and this, I guess this is where I would interpret this differently. It says, "A municipality may amend its charter pursuant to this section, notwithstanding any charter provisions to the contrary." And what, what that means is that even if there is a conflict with the provisions in 166.0311, which creates a process, and, and that process in the statute and the process in the charter, if there's a conflict, municipal can amend its charter pursuant to 166.031, notwithstanding if there is a conflict. I also would disagree, however, that there is a conflict. Your, the decision that this council has made to use the process set forth in 166.0311, in my opinion, is not a conflict, because you take a look at, at the charter, it says, the charter may be amended in accordance with the provisions of Chapter 166, so it circles back around. Then you look at subsection 2, and it says, yes, the charter... Then you look at subsection 2, and it, and it says, yes, the charter shall be reviewed, but it says, no sooner than 10 years and thereafter. So it may be reviewed pursuant to this charter review process. So that's not a conflict. It says that you can't review it in the first 10 years from 1999. And after that, if you want to review it, you can choose this process, and that's the charter review process. But both, both the charter and statute both say that this is an alternative. This is one way you can do it. The other alternative is to set forth, notwithstanding, you know, another provision in the charter, says in 166, you can use the provisions for amendment that are in 166. That's what this council chose.
We're in keeping with our charter.
We are absolutely consistent. Well, even, even if it wasn't, the statute says, "We can use the statutory process, notwithstanding any charter provisions to the contrary." But it's my opinion that there aren't any charter provisions that are to the contrary. Rather, the charter provides an additional option that this council chose not to pursue.
Thank you. So I will entertain a motion to approve nine, 10, 11, and 12.
Move approval? Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, it passes unanimously. We'll now move to public participation portion of the agenda. Any member of the public can speak on items not on the agenda. Please state your name for the record, and your three minutes will begin.
Yeah, Charles Ebert, Palm Coast. I would like to tell the council how embarrassing the workshop of the city manager job on August 3rd of 2017. The room was set up poorly, and the viewing sense, so many were in attendance, the whole room should have been opened up to the public. The portion that was opened up blocked the mayor and everybody else from speaking in front of the attendees. And some of the people and myself, I didn't understand why the, the manager was allowed to speak and so forth, and the public was not. That looks like something's been hidden from us and so forth, and I didn't agree with it. Another item was, I did not attend the workshop that you disapproved, the USS Liberty plaque. That is a disgrace that the Vietnam vets received, and I'm a veteran, and I am a Vietnam vet. And I think that was a disgrace that whatever said in Flagler Live is what I read, okay? So I think that it needs to be discussed further with you all. Another item that was brought up in the council, which you just tabled, was, it was for the whole thing to move our comments to you and to get more items at the six o'clock time instead of all the time at nine o'clock. Now, my workhorse, as far as Waste Pro, I just turned in the photographs that Ms. Grossman's agents gave me, and I think Ms. Grossman needs to approach you guys and find out what's going on. I've contacted Waste Pro myself again, and I talked to the regional manager, Mr. Brian Bolter, and he says that they were going to try to continue on, on trying to fade out or power wash out those skid marks in hidden lakes. If it is not done, and they do not stand up to their word, with my affidavits already submitted, I want the fines subject to whatever the statutes and so forth come out. And that's $300 per incident, as described in the contract with Waste Pro in Section 15, subtitle U. And I counted 160 of them. Now, Mr. City Manager said, well, we want compliance, and it's not a matter of money and so forth. Then why is it in the contract? Why do we have all these fines and we don't enforce them? Thank you very much, and have a good day.
Thank you. Next speaker. I want to close public comment. As far as the Waste Pro, if you could address that, I'm not sure what else.
I know Barbara's addressing it, it's, I don't have an update.
What are we talking about? The cleaning of the skid marks?
Well, the, once again, you had a driver who, and they've assured us, and we haven't seen any evidence, it's still going on. You're talking about, I mean, my street's got skid marks on it, too, you know. I don't know if it's Waste Pro or somebody else. So we feel like we're handling it. You know, to, to find Waste Pro is, you know, once again, we do, we find them every month when they do things that are perpetual. You know, they, they miss pickups and those type of things. In this case, I'm letting Barbara handle it best that she can, and it's, it's tough, because, like I said, there's different reasons for skid marks out there, and it's not all just because of Waste Pro.
I had the opportunity, I was meeting with Ms. Grossman this morning on other matters, and, and she asked me to, we talked about this as well, and just like the city manager said, her staff has looked at every affidavit that's been submitted, has gone out there and inspected this, this community, as well as there's some, some other communities with some concerns as well. Certainly, we're looking at the process for finding from, from the contractual standpoint, but she is working, her staff and she are working with representatives from Waste Pro to eliminate any further, to work with them to change their practices or change, I mean, I'm not, I don't understand exactly how a garbage truck works, I apologize, but they're, they're doing what they can do to try to make sure that doesn't happen in the future, and they're working with Waste Pro. I've been advised this morning to make sure that all of the, the problems on the public roads that are out there in this community are fixed as soon as possible. And if they're not, then absolutely. We've got, we've got a contract, and it's got provisions for enforcement, and, and we'll use those. But this is something that I was advised this morning, they're working very diligently on to, to try to especially prevent in the future.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Eger. We'll take everything into consideration moving forward on setup of meetings. Okay? That'll close public comment. We'll move to discussion by city council of matters not on the agenda. Councilmember Cuff.
Nothing for this meeting.
Vice Mayor, no deal.
I just had one item. I was asking, we had a discussion on the radio the other day about our IT department, and one of the items that came up that surprised me was the cost that it does take us to mail out our paper utility bills is $150,000 a year. And I know we've brought up before trying to get our residents more acclimated to an electronic approach. I didn't know if we were being strategic in that. That's, if we could save $150,000 a year, I think that's a good strategy, if we can find a way to really better inform our residents that if, if they really do request an electronic company, that's a cost savings to them as well.
It's actually a performance measure. We get an update every quarter that we have incentives. We give them a discount on their connection fees, and Chris can tell you some other things that we do to try to encourage people to sign up for electronic bills and also pay electronically. So Chris, give them the details.
Thank you. Good morning, everyone. One of the things that we do currently, which we've had the program ongoing for a while now, is every time a new customer comes in, customer service uses a discount on their turn-on fee to encourage folks to sign up right then and there for electronic billing and electronic payment methods. Each bill that we send out is about roughly 11 cents for the paper and envelope, then of course, about 40 cents, which is the bulk of the cost for postage. So every time we don't send out a bill, the cost for the paper and, more importantly, the cost for the postage, which is about $150,000 a year, can be avoided. All of that, of course, flows through the utility funds, part of the utility fund. We have about a 50% roughly adoption rate over the counter for folks. Some folks just don't want to sign up electronically. Anyone can sign up electronically anytime they want. We encourage it at Citizens Academy, whenever we do Outlook to Citizens. They can also get their, their, their bill information and make payments via text, not just, not just by email, not just by logging into our website, but there's a text-to-pay application also. It's, it's just one of those things, you know, we have some people that love paying online, but they still want that paper bill every month. It's, it's a personal choice, and it's, you know, difficult to convince everyone that the best way to go is electronic. They just feel uncomfortable that, that their electronic bill will come to them as efficiently as they get it from the post office. So we do always try and to encourage that, and it's a little bit of an uphill battle to get through that.
Thank you.
We actually, some employees have a little competition as to who can sign up the most and the like. So yeah, we take it serious, but.
Because I think the statistic was 38,000 utility bills get sent out, and 12,000 of them are electronically, the rest are, are paper. So that's where that cost comes in, too. So, and maybe if people take our virtual Citizens Academy, we'll get better and better informed with it. Okay. I have nothing else. Council, discussion by city attorney of matters not on the agenda.
Nothing to discuss.
And discussion by our city manager.
I'm going to lead off, or lead off. I'm going to finish with another one of my staff. They know I didn't particularly like the zombie bicycle safety. You know, I'm not a zombie fan, but they enjoyed it, and it's obviously very popular. And they showed me, because this past week, we got the Zombie Survival Guide for Bicycle Safety Award. No, the, more, more seriously, the Florida Public Relations Association granted us first place for best public video. So more statewide recognition for a great, great job our communication team does, so, in conjunction with the fire department. In addition to that, welcome back, Cindy, because it sure is helpful when you send me the texts. Tonight, we have Food Truck Tuesday from 5 to 8, right here at Central Park. The beneficiary this, this month is the Flagler Education Foundation. We also will have someone from the fire department there doing car seat safety checks, make sure your infant seats in your car are installed correctly. And then senior games are coming up, and the deadline for registration for the senior games, which is popular and gets, and grows more and more every year, is September 1st. So anybody that wants to compete in senior games, you can register online or get together with Parks and Recreation. With that, mayor, I have nothing further.
I want you to adjourn.